Good evening, everybody. I now call the Eastlime Zoning Commission regular meeting of October 21, 2021 to order. It is 7:33 PM, and we will begin as we always do, as great Americans, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight. This will be the appropriate time to silence your cellphones if you haven't done so already, so we can avoid any of those interruptions. In previous meetings, I think I've been the biggest offender of that, so I think that warning is more for me than anyone. With that said, I see we have a full commission. We have a full six-member commission, and we also have a couple of alteness in attendance tonight, so we are ready for tonight's business. We will start this evening as we always do with public delegations. Public delegations is time set aside for members of the public to address the commission regarding items, topics, subjects not appearing on this evening's agenda. Excuse me. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to step to the podium, state their name and address for the record, and address the commission regarding any items, topics that do not appear on this evening's agenda? All right, seeing none, moving right along to public hearing segment. And the first public hearing tonight is the application of Theodore A. Harris Esquire for Christopher Manwaring for a text amendment to the Eastlime zoning regulations to add to Section 8.2 landscaping service company as a special permit in a CA zone. I'll note the legal ad has been run. I note that for the record. Is that correct, Mr. Mahalan?
Yes, Mr. James.
Okay, we do have a few letters that we need to read into the record, and then at that point in time, we will take our presentation from our applicant attorney Harris. So we have a planning letter, we have an SCCOG letter, and we have a DEEP letter. Mr. Secretary, when you are ready.
So it's from the planning. Dated August 12, 2021, Matt Walker, Chairman, Eastlime Zoning Commission, Town of Eastlime, regarding application of Theodore A. Harris Esquire for Christopher Manwaring for a text amendment to the Eastlime zoning regulations to add to Section 8.2 landscaping service company as a special permit in a CA zone. Chairman Walker, the Eastlime Planning Commission, at its meeting of August 10, 2021, found the above referenced text amendment consistent with the 2020 Eastlime Plan of Conservation and Development as amended. If you have any further questions regarding this letter or P O C D, please do not hesitate to contact the Director of Planning, Gary Geishel. Sincerely, Michelle Royce Williams, Secretary, Planning Commission.
Thank you. Now, we have the SCCOG letter.
Yes, dated September 8, 2021, Mr. Walker, Chairman, Eastlime Zoning Commission. Dear Mr. Walker, I am writing in response to two applications for amendments to the zoning regulations of the Town of Eastlime. The applications were referred to this agency pursuant to Section 8-3B of the Connecticut General Statutes. The proposed zoning regulation amendments seek to, one, add landscaping service company as a use requiring a special permit in the CA commercial zone, and, two, marijuana dispensary as a use requiring a special permit in the LI industrial zone. The second application for regulation amendments also creates use standards, creates use, excuse me, use standards for marijuana dispensaries. Based on a review of the material submitted, I do not believe the proposed regulation amendments will have a negative intermunicipal impact. If you have any questions, please contact me, Samuel Alexander.
All right, the final one is the DEEP letter.
Yes. From Marcy Blint, dated August 25, 2021, Eastlime Zoning Commission, care of William Mahalan, zoning official. Subject, Connecticut DEEP comments on proposed text amendment to Section 8.2 to add landscape service company as SP in a CA zone. Dear Commissioners, thank you for notifying the Land and Water Resource Division of the proposed text amendment noted above, we'll say received, on August 23, 2021. Acting as the Commissioner's staff, our office has reviewed the revised text for the consistency with the policies and standards of the Connecticut Coastal Management Act, CCMA, Sections 22A-90 through 22A-112 inclusive, and finds it generally consistent. These comments are made in response to the review requirement contained in Connecticut General Statutes, Section 22A-104, Section E, Sub-E, excuse me, which requires that any zoning regulations or changes thereto affecting the area within the coastal boundary shall be consistent with the policies of the Connecticut General Statutes, Section 22A-92, and the criteria of subsection B of Section 22A-102 of the CCMA. Further, this section requires that notification be sent to the Commissioner of Energy and Environmental Protection at least 35 days prior to the commencement of the public hearing. Once notified, our office is responsible for reviewing the proposals' consistency with policies of Section 22A-92 and the criteria of Section 22A-102 subsection B of the CCMA. This response does not necessarily reflect other planning and zoning considerations which may apply. Should you have any questions regarding this coastal management matter, please feel free to contact me, Marcy Blint.
Very good. We'll move to our presentation by the applicant. That's going to be followed by questions by the commission, and then that will be followed by any comments from the public, either for or against, either in support or in opposition of this application. Attorney Harris.
Good evening, Travis Commission. For the record, Ted Harris, 351 Main Street, Niantic, representing the applicant proceeding. This is a proposal to add a special permit use to the CA zone. As you probably know, the CA zone is located on West Main Street, a little bit of Black Point Road, the Flanders area, and Dawsonville Road, North of Flanders. There are a variety of uses in the CA zone. For example, allowed uses include business and professional housing, gas stations, personal service facilities, and hotels. Special permit uses are large-scale retail business, oh, excuse me, warehouse stores or large warehouse stores, auto sales, fast food, parking lots, and large retail. So there's a variety of uses that are allowed in the zone. I chose to make this a special permit use so there's controls with respect to the operation and therefore make it consistent with other uses in the zone itself. So looking at the controls that I proposed, first, all landscaping materials and machinery are going to be stored in the building. There are some landscaping services that are in the CA zone with bins outside and machinery outside and that like. This would prevent that from happening, and all those items would have to be inside the building. Second, this is designed to be a combination office and conference room to present plans to customers and the like, so office space would be 20% of the interior of the building remaining would be warehouse space for machinery, equipment, and the like. Outdoor parking would be limited to cars and pickup trucks, again, trying to keep it consistent with the zone and not impinge on other neighbors. And finally, parking would be basically as is in the regulations, one for 250 for the office space and one for 400 square feet for the rest of the building that is storage and machinery storage. So very simply, I think with these controls, this would be consistent with the zone and planning is time and consistent with the plan of conservation and development as well. And as a special permit, you would have to be, say, in terms of the site plan as well as other controls that you might want to impose based on the criteria in Section 25. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I guess the thing that jumps out for me is all landscaping materials and machinery shall be stored indoors, and I'm just wondering how realistic that is.
It is realistic because--
Because I'm familiar with the trades and how people store stuff, how they keep things, and after a long day, you know, things can be left outside. That's the only thing that kind of jumped off the page to me.
Well, in this particular instance--
Right.
This individual or this business does not handle landscaping materials. It is directly delivered to the sites that they're working--
From the supplier.
Exactly.
I got you.
So there won't be, you know, minimal, there might be some minimal things that could be stored inside, and certainly with respect to the machinery in order to keep it up, they don't want to leave it up in the rain, so--
Sure.
There's a built-in incentive to move it inside.
Sure.
So then, but then again, this is just for the zone. It's not for the certain individual, correct? That's what we're talking about. So a landscaping company, to me, will also have trailers and tractors and stuff like that. So by, just to be clear, so by being in special permit, they would have to adhere to all this?
Correct.
So would their architecture allow for something like that in the zone? Large Butler Building or something like that? I'm just asking a question.
I'm not sure I follow that question.
Landscaping trailers, you know, that the mowers are on, like John Deere tractors, Kubota tractors, stuff like that. So all that would have to be--
That would have to be stored inside.
Inside. I mean, just putting this applicant aside for everybody else who comes in. So by being by special permit, Mr. Mahalan, they would have to be approved--
Well, if it's a special permit, they got to come back to you--
If we get somebody other than--
They've to come back to you for a special permit in a public hearing, and at that particular time, you would review the application to see if it adheres to what's been proposed here. In addition, you could add conditions, reasonable conditions. So you'll have an opportunity to do a hearing. I think that question is, is CA, in my opinion, the right place for this type of activity, and that's what you have to consider this evening.
How many trucks and trailers does a typical landscaping company?
It certainly varies based on the square footage of this building. The square footage, we're not talking the specific building, that's no problem.
Sure.
But based on the use that this particular client, what he'd build in too, he would have sufficient room to store all his equipment inside.
My only concern was the CA district also has single-family and two-family homes, and if it were located next to that, you'd have these trucks and trailers coming and going maybe early in the morning, or, you know, every day, it'd be by, you know, residential areas. I don't know where this is, but--
When you get to the special permit, you could limit hours and the like to the extent that you feel that there would be an impingement on the neighborhood. And you could also provide for buffers and fencing and that type of thing. That's why I made this a special permit, so when, in the context of a specific application, you could impose some conditions.
And I can answer your question. Every landscaping company is different. You have companies out there that have one truck and trailer, and you have others that have 10 trucks and 10 trailers. So it depends upon the applicant, is what Attorney Harris is saying, so you just have to keep that in mind, and I do agree with what you're saying there, but every landscaping is different. I mean, even if you just start out with one truck, you can end up having five in 10 years, so.
I'd be curious, just from an enforcement standpoint, from at the staff level, Mr. Mahalan, just your thoughts on this, and if there's enough safeguards, enough controls in here--
Yeah, it becomes something else to be monitored in addition, I think, when you get to, if you get to the special permit--
Right.
--portion of this, and this gets approved, you're going to look at hours of operation. Typically, in the summertime, it's more like 6:00 to 3:00 in the heat.
In wintertime, it's at night, pulling in there?
And sometimes they snowplow in the winter because they can't mow, so you have that piece, but, you know, a part of your equation this evening, but it's also something to be considered at the special permit time as well. But right now, you'd be putting in place this activity in all of the CA zone. In addition, I think one of the questions is multiple uses, because we have those in CA zones on some sites. And, you know, that's something to be considered either this evening or in the future.
Is this something you would be able to enforce by only being one person?
We manage now. You've seen the books in the office. There must be 2,000, 3,000 letters.
With everything that's allowed there now, that there is really not a problem.
And I think, yeah, I think by special permit, too, you can also regulate it.
We can regulate. Gives us a lot of discretion.
Yeah.
The special permit process gives us a lot of discretion, Commissioner, there's no question about it, in terms of fencing, buffers, all those things.
Why propose to add a special permit?
Right, got you. Okay. Any other commission members have any comments, questions? All right. With that, we will take--
One, fertilizer wouldn't enter it, is right.
Well, to the extent--
Storage of, yeah.
To the extent that they use bags of fertilizer--
Okay.
--inside, but in most cases, they have a company that comes in with a lighter fertilizer.
That would be a concern for mine, with a family house. But just asking the question. I know you'll take care of it.
But this is a text, this is a text amendment. We're not focused on the actual application.
Applicant, right.
Or a site-specific.
Right. This could be the neatest, most meticulous landscaping outfit ever, right? But we've got to think longitudinally and about other--
We have a few that are not so meticulous.
Right.
That's why I put these controls here.
Right.
One of them is a question like that, never mind.
Very good. Do we have anyone from the public that wishes to speak, we'll say, in support or for this application at this point in time? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to step to the podium and speak in support of this text amendment application? Seeing none, is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak in opposition of this text amendment proposal or application? All right, seeing that. Do you have anything else, Attorney Harris?
I do not, unless you have any more questions.
Good. Any more questions? Everybody good?
Yep.
All right. I'll take the motion to close the public hearing if we're ready to do so.
So moved.
And that was Mr. Donovan.
Second.
You have a second, Mr. Peck.
We have to help out Ms. Spang tonight.
Yep, yep, she's, yep, yep. Sue is still aware of who we are.
We're happy to have her.
Absolutely, thankful, very thankful. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we are unanimous that we are closing the public hearing. And with that, we're going to move on to item number two in the public hearing segment, and I believe that Mr. Peck, wait till I read it, he's going to recuse himself from this application.
Yep.
And his replacement tonight will be Mr. James Lisk, Jim Lisk.
Jimmy boy.
L-I-S-K. All right, and item number two in the public hearing segment is the application, again, of Theodore A. Harris Esquire for Lori Zarinda for a text amendment to the Eastlime zoning regulations to add to Section 11.2 marijuana dispensary as a special permit in a light industrial zone, and add restrictions to Section 25.5 table of minimum controls for marijuana dispensary. And with that, I'll note that the legal ad has been run.
Correct.
Thank you. And we do have a few letters, and then we're going to hear our presentation from the applicant attorney Harris, and we'll start with the planning letter. Mr. Secretary.
Excuse me. Dated August 12, 2021, Matt Walker, Chairman, Eastlime Zoning Commission, regarding application of Theodore A. Harris Esquire for Lori Zarinda for a text amendment to the Eastlime zoning regulations to add to Section 11.2 marijuana dispensary as a special permit in an LI zone and add restrictions to Section 25.5 table of minimum controls for marijuana, excuse me, marijuana dispensary. Chairman Walker, the Eastlime Planning Commission, at its meeting of August 10, 2021, found the above referenced text amendment consistent with the 2020 Eastlime Planning Conservation and Development as amended. If you have any further questions regarding this letter or P O C D, please do not hesitate to contact Director of Planning, Gary Geishel. Sincerely, Michelle Royce Williams, Secretary.
Very good. Then we have the--
South cousin, yep.
Yeah, we have the SCCOG letter.
Read it again.
Yep. It's the same letter.
Same letter.
Yep.
Shall I read it again?
We don't need to read again. Read it again.
I'll read it again.
You covered both already.
In and back of the act.
All right, got you.
Deja vu. Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments, dated September 8, 2021, Mr. Matthew Walker, Chairman, Town of Eastlime Zoning Commission. Dear Mr. Walker, I am writing in response to two applications for amendments to the zoning regulations of the Town of Eastlime. The applications were referred to this agency pursuant to Section 8-3B of the Connecticut General Statutes. The proposed zoning regulation amendments to seek, one, add landscaping service company as a use requiring a special permit in the CA commercial zone, and, two, add marijuana dispensary as a use requiring a special permit in the LI industrial zone. The second application for regulation amendments also creates use standards for marijuana dispensaries. Based on a review of the material submitted, I do not believe the proposed regulation amendments will have a negative intermunicipal impact, excuse me, impact. If you have any questions, please contact me, Samuel Alexander. Moving on. This one is from DEEP, dated August 25, 2021, Eastlime Zoning Commission, care of William Mahalan, zoning official. Subject, Connecticut DEEP comments on proposed text amendment to the section, excuse me, to Section 11.2 marijuana dispensary as SP in an LI zone and Section 25.5 table of minimum controls for a dispensary. Dear Commissioners, thank you for notifying the Land and Water Resource Division of the proposed text amendment noted above received on August 23, 2021. Acting as the Commissioner's staff, our office has reviewed the revised text for consistency with the policies and standards of the Connecticut General, excuse me, Connecticut Coastal Management Act, Connecticut General Statutes, Sections 22A-90 through 22A-112 inclusive, and finds them generally consistent. These comments are made in response to the review required, excuse me, requirement contained in Connecticut General Statutes Sections 22A-104 Sub-E, which requires that any zoning regulations or changes thereto affecting the area within the coastal boundary shall be consistent with the policies of Connecticut General Statutes, Section 22A-92, and the criteria of subsection B of Section 22A-102 of the CCMA. Further, this section requires that notification be sent to the Commissioner of Energy and Environmental Protection at least 35 days prior to the commencement of the public hearing. Once notified, our office is responsible for reviewing the proposals' consistency with the policies of Section 22A-92 and the criteria of Section 22A-102 Sub-B of the CCMA. This response does not necessarily reflect other planning and zoning considerations which may apply. Should you have any questions regarding this letter or any other coastal management matter, please feel free to contact me, Marcy Blint.
Thanks, Terry. We still have the zoning official memo, right? Wait to read that.
I did not provide one on this particular application, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, very good. And with that, we will go to our presentation by the applicant.
Read it again. This, one thing I'd like to comment on before I start. I submitted a slightly revised application tonight in terms of the actual text of the proposed regulations. And all it did was eliminate the micro-cultivator, because, as we'll see later on, there can only be one of these establishments based on the Eastlime population.
Mr. Harris, do you happen to have another copy of that?
Yes.
By any chance, please, for Mr. Lisk?
Other than that, it's identical.
Thank you. Thank you, Ted.
This application tonight is prompted by a change in the law which occurred as of July of this year. Cannabis was made legal in Connecticut, and there's an elaborate system of, from seed to sales, developed in conjunction with the Act and recently enacted regulations that were actually promulgated officially this week. The Act generally allows individuals of 21 years or older to possess and use cannabis. Small quantities, as in one and a half ounces, can be maintained on their person, and larger quantities, up to six ounces, can be stored either in a lockbox in the trunk of a car or in the glove compartment or a lockbox at home. So it, this has prompted a wide discussion in terms of the advent of marijuana or cannabis in this state. The application process for the variety of entities, they're called establishments. The establishments are different for every step of the process, from the growing to the distribution, to the packaging, and ultimately to the retail sale. There's still medical marijuana as well, under a separate category, but within this general framework of the law. The application process is a little different, particularly with respect to retail sale. 50% of those licenses have to go to a group of challenged individuals, is the best way to put it. So the general hat, the other hat, is going to go into a lottery, and basically, if you win the lottery, you get your license. What is unclear at this stage is what has to be submitted in terms of an application, because the application forms have not been completed yet, and in terms of approvals that you might need in order to get into that lottery. So this is basically the initial stage, and what we're proposing is a regulation that allows a special permit, which would then have to come back to this commission. But it is my feeling that this would at least show that this is feasible within the Town of Eastlime and therefore be able to get into the queue, which is why we're here somewhat prematurely, but it's important to make sure that we could get in the process as early as possible to get into the lottery and maybe get in a high place in the lottery As I mentioned, the general term for the facilities that would involve, be involved in the production and sale of cannabis are called establishments. And this particular establishment is, is called a sale, a seller. And I'd like now to highlight some of the characteristics of what we're going to be proposing this evening. One of the factors that we looked at was separation distances, and that is the typical with respect to, for example, bars and stuff, the existing regulations provide separation distances to various type of activities to protect those activities. And you'll see when we get into the regulation itself that we've provided a separation distance. Ironically, that separation distance implies that there's really only one area that this retail vendor could be located. First, it's in an LI zone only, which eliminates the commercial zones, residential zones, and the like. And it also has separation distances in this particular instance to churches, which eliminates the Rocky Neck LI district, and to schools, which eliminates the industrial park LI district. So the only L I district that remains and would be available for this year is the Colton Road Industrial Park. And frankly, that's an ideal location because it's in close proximity to I ninety-five. There's easy access, and it would not have implied lots of traffic through the downtown areas or through the roads within the town because most people would travel on the state roads or I ninety-five because they're all in close proximity to this location, proposed location.
Isn't that exit seventy-one?
Yes.
Four Mile River.
Yeah, which is in, I think, actually the next town.
Well, it's right on the border. That road separates Eastline and Westline, right?
Yep.
As I understand it.
The laws, because it's currently written in the regulations, would only allow one establishment of any nature within the Town of Eastline. And the reason for that is it's based on population. One per twenty-five thousand population, and we're at about nineteen to twenty thousand. I never see, I don't see us getting to fifty thousand population, which would be the next step to get a second establishment. So this would really be the limit that we're proposing tonight.
So you would have to hit fifty to have a second store?
That is correct.
It's one of these.
And if you get the lottery.
Well, yeah, there's a lot of.
Or a second.
Lot of ifs.
Different type of establishment as well.
All right.
There is also, there also are controls in the Act from quote seed to sale. And I'll talk about that a little bit more. But the production and the vending of cannabis is controlled. And as you'll see later on, there's, it's, the whole process is transmitted step by step to the state during, and in some cases, for example, in retail, it has to be within a minute when sales are made.
So Attorney Harris, am I just understanding this correctly? So you want to change marijuana dispensary to cannabis establishment?
Well, that, you're looking at an old one, I think. That was a, that draft never saw the light of day.
What you handed me today says, for the purpose of this special permit, cannabis establishment shall mean retailing.
That's correct.
Okay, so, all right, I missed that. Gotcha.
I have one question.
That's the term of art within the Act.
There's a new housing development at the end of Capital Drive, the new affordable rentals. Is that within two thousand feet of your proposed building?
I don't know precisely whether it is or is not. I don't believe it is, but it's at the other end of.
Because to me, that would be the main thing that should be on the list is at least two thousand feet from a residential area. I'd want to check that out.
I think it is. You've got hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, six hundred. I think you're within a thousand.
But it's sort of divorced from the, from the industrial park, and the industrial park contains a variety of industrial uses. In fact, right next to that end of the industrial park is Burg Plan and Bantry. It has two buildings, and I've been there. It tends to be noisy.
If I may, I will note that there is no pass-through from Capital Drive into this development.
That's correct.
It'll be an emergency gate that'll be keyed. Our police will have access to that.
But people can walk through it, right?
Oh, you certainly can walk. Maybe that's a good or bad thing.
But the other aspect, just to point out another aspect is everything that happens has to be inside the building, and no consumption can take place within the facility or in the facility or in the established property. So it's, and when the purchases are made, it's, there are sealed containers that are tracked through the process. So you're not allowed to smoke on the property. You're not allowed to smoke in the dispense, in the retail store. And people would then just go off and do their thing elsewhere.
The only question I have is actually for both of you. So the letters that I read from DEEP, Council of Governments, et cetera, planning a for a marijuana dispensary, not a cannabis establishment. Does it mean anything?
No, I think the same.
I'm just looking in terms of the legality of it, that's all.
It's actually synonyms.
It's synonymous. It's the same thing, if you will.
All right, so then what I was reading him before was just like a draft, and you were, gotcha.
Okay.
I understood it, thank you.
Excuse me, two thousand feet seems extremely, it's just too much.
Well, again, this was designed to make sure that it wasn't near facilities that are sensitive. Again, schools.
But does that limit something to after that's up? Is that space reserved? Can something fit in there?
I'm not sure.
Like a library? Can you put a library? Libraries are allowed in the area.
That's correct, but this would be located in the industrial, Colton Road Industrial Park. That, because of the separation distances, that's the only place it could be. And frankly, it was designed for that purpose.
But I'm saying, two thousand feet, that's a long, long way. Cut it to two hundred, I'd help it.
In actuality, it's not as far as you're thinking it is.
It's only half a mile.
I think for schools, I think for schools, places of worship, playgrounds, two thousand feet is appropriate. I would even add to that, and I don't think, it doesn't become an issue here, is, you know, daycare facilities, daycare centers, I don't see that in there. But that's another form of, another place where kids are. Of course, those are really young kids, but for the most part, but not always. They could be after-school programs and kids in, you know, middle school age, probably not high school age, but that might be something to add to that. It's probably not critically important, but it's just something I, might be, might be a good catch.
Mr. Chairman, I also note that should you adopt this regulation, it will be by special permit, so you would obviously have that opportunity again to put additional conditions on any specific site location.
I do agree with Attorney Harris's characterization that that residential area is divorced, I think it's a good word, from that, that light industrial area, the way that those two properties are. If you've been down there, it's.
I did the original proof, so I'm very familiar with it.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Lisca, you had something?
Yeah, is this for the medical or?
No, recreational, recreational.
Certainly retail, recreational.
Attorney Harris, you made a comment, I think it was in your opening statement, about the cultivation. Could you just say what you said again, because I don't think I followed it.
The original proposal had a microcultivator as an alternative. At that point, we had not analyzed the entire three hundred pages of this special act. And it turns out that because of the population in town, you cannot have more than one facility or more than one establishment. So the preferred one would be retail. So I, since we're going to be focusing on retail, I decided to just take that out because it would not provide any relief in any event.
They're separate licenses, I think.
Yeah, but you can't have more than one of those type of licenses.
Right, right.
Right, so, but, and I understand that you're representing a client that has perhaps a particular plan, but this is for a text amendment. So there could be a scenario where we may not win the lottery. I don't know this rule very well, but we may not win the lottery to have a retail establishment. But someone could win the lottery, so to speak, to be a microcultivator. So for our text amendment, if you could help me understand why we would not want to have both as an option? Given that we don't know where this is going to go.
I don't have a problem with leaving it in. I just thought it would be a little simpler, if you know what I mean.
Yeah.
But if the commission's mind is that it should be left in, that's fine with me as well.
Okay. I just feel like because this is a new body of law and we don't have a lot of knowledge in it to be flexible.
We're all learning, by the way.
Flying by the seat of my pants here.
And I don't intend to leave the three hundred pages.
With the restrictions in place, do we really need to state the zone? I mean, you need to state the zone.
It's important that it's limited to the yellow eye zone.
Yeah, if you remember, Mr. Lisca, a while back, at this commission, we were ahead of the game on medicinal marijuana to where we came up with the zone. So I think by following that same rule, more or less, is a good idea, so.
And follow up to his comments. You may recall, some years ago, we did a study on adult uses. And because if you don't regulate it, then it's permitted anywhere. So we found one spot that's allowed. It happens to be on Colton Road as well. Using the same methodology, some separation distances, et cetera, et cetera. So it would land in one particular area because the thought was if you had to have it, here's a spot for it.
And it's, as I said, it's an ideal spot because of its location.
Or subgroup work to identify the L I, yeah.
There's also another aspect of the Act, and that is that the town receives three percent as a tax on the gross revenues. And based on initial estimates of gross sales, that could be anywhere from six hundred thousand to one point two million dollars once everything is running. The use of that money by the town is somewhat restrictive. It can be used for town projects such as roads, road beautification, town beautification, that type of thing. Excuse me. It can also be used for town functions, like, you know, celebrating Eastline, for example.
The cannabis?
No, no. The revenue.
So right there on Main Street, be a happy crowd.
Thanks for the laugh. The monetary aspect of it.
By the way, this is Lawrence.
Doesn't say the only thing is alcohol, I'm sorry, mental health and addiction services. Is it what they make or something?
I've been to some towns in Massachusetts where it's legal. It's been legal for a little bit while. It's right on Main Street. And like Attorney was saying, you go in and it comes out in packages, and it's no different than buying cigarettes, a pack of cigarettes.
So basically, streetscape improvements, education programs, mental health, youth service bureaus, community civic engagements, et cetera.
So let's look at the exact language of the proposal itself, and then I'll have some official comments with respect to that.
Very good.
First, there's a definition. It graphs the definition right out of the public act for the retailer. The second are the location restrictions, and I just mentioned that. Public or private schools, places of worship, private or public playgrounds, another cannabis establishment, but now we know there can't be another one unless they change the law. Places serving alcohol for consumption on the premises, hospitals and libraries. Operating hours, we propose a maximum of nine A M. to nine P M. Parking would be in accordance with the standards for retail sales unless the commission were to decide otherwise. All sales will have to be within a building, and that's based on the law itself. And no consumption, as I mentioned, can take place within the building or on the property. And finally, we're just restatement of the obvious. It has to be appropriately licensed by the state of Connecticut, and it has to be operated in conjunction with the regulations and guidelines that are required by the state.
There might be a few regulations there, is what you're saying. The state of Connecticut's involved, just a few.
There's fifty-four pages of regulations.
I can only imagine, can only imagine.
So I'm going to summarize some of the highlights of the regulatory framework. And it's actually somewhat important to highlight these. First and foremost, there's reporting to the state required at every stage from seed to sale. At some point in the early stages, there's a number assigned to the packaging, and that number is traced throughout the process from delivery to retail. And there's a central computer at the state which has to be, and everything has to be logged at each stage. And as I said, once it gets packaged, there's an identification number that follows it. And it also would be in the early stages, not for a package, but for a quantity that goes into a package, if you will. Everything has to be tracked so that there is knowledge that no marijuana or cannabis, I should say, is leaving the state or is coming into the state and being sold surreptitiously. The retail operation must have a point-of-sale system that automatically transmits within a minute every sale to the state. And that transmission includes that identifier for that particular quantity of cannabis. So there's large controls over what happens through this process. And as to packaging, as I mentioned, it's individually packaged and sealed in actually opaque containers, so someone like this would get at it. And that, those can't be opened until they leave the facility. Let's look at what the facility has to have. There are a variety of requirements for facilities themselves. First, there has to be the public space, the interior public space has to be separate from the rest of the building, and no public can enter the private part of the building except there's a few exceptions built into the Act. There is required employee training and education, and the minimum is two days. There's required outside lighting. There's required video surveillance. There's required. Think of my own writing. Oh, and there's a requirement that storage of even the packages must be in a safe. And that's just a few of the requirements. The Act also allows possession of that, as I mentioned, one and a half grams of cannabis. But it is prohibited in restaurants regardless of the town's desires. And the town is allowed to prohibit it on all town property. I mean, that's the property. But it is prohibited in the Act from being in restaurants. One other perspective I'd like to look at, and that is cannabis is going to be sold widely within the state. We know that based on the Act. And the only disadvantage that I can see to this regulation is that's not the way I wanted to say that. The cannabis is going to be here, whether it's purchased at Eastline or purchased outside of Eastline, it's going to be here. And the most important thing is that the town has control. And the most important thing is that the town has control and has the revenue to deal with it to the extent it has to. So it seems to me that you're better off having this facility within the town and generating that revenue. It's going to be here anyway, than, um, having it enter town from Montville, New London, wherever a location, wherever an establishment vendor is, and then have the same issues, potential issues in town. So it seems to me that this is a better solution, if you will, given the, given the context of the law itself. The revenue will certainly help. Laurie, did you have any comments?
Before you go there, can I ask a question? Um, in the act, you have to be twenty-one to purchase, is that correct?
And cannabis.
And so how do they envision protecting against the resale on site? If I'm twenty-one, I might go buy what I can, and then Tommy and Bobby are meeting me in the lot.
You can only buy one and a half ounces at any one time.
But I can still resell that in the lot. I'm going to assume that's why the surveillance and the lighting.
That's not why we're here.
We've had experience with that in the medical marijuana dispensary. I own, um, ran Famous Valley Relief Office though for seven years. And, yeah, we had cameras in the parking lot, and we caught people doing that, and at least luckily, we're two doors down from us.
And I will tell you why I asked that question, because I was in your parking lot and I watched a couple of the resales. I was there with our town planner, observing. And right then and there, now could I prove it? No, but there was no question in my mind.
We come in, we put it on a thumb drive, and then they arrest them, it's awesome.
And cameras are required under the act.
Yeah, just for the record, I mean, I just noticed unfortunately that your microphone is not there, so I'm hoping that everybody can hear you.
Oh, sorry about that.
I just noticed it myself. And I do not know where it is. So, yeah, no, just the, I'm sure it'll be all right there, but.
Anyway.
It's my understanding that the security also has to be, like, super, suped up.
Yes, it does.
So, you know, and.
No, there's, there's detailed security requirements, not just you have to have a security system and a police department, fire department. And there's two of, two or three other third parties that also have to connect with.
In addition, should you move forward with this, our new police station is what, eight hundred feet?
Yeah.
We love having a police nearby, so that's for sure. Yeah, then I read through the new regulations for recreational use, and it's almost like they copied and pasted the medical regulations.
Can you do me a favor? Can you stand up over there for me?
Sure.
Yeah, and maybe spell your name for our new clerk.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Thanks, I should have done, yeah. That'd be great, Laurie, if you could just state your name and address for the record and stand over there near Ted, that would be great. Just for, so we follow protocols here.
You're welcome, Sue.
Appreciate it.
Laurie Zerenda, Z R E N D A, Forty Miles Away Road.
Your name is in the records. We had Zerendas here, sitting with, I sat with some of them.
There's a lot of us. Um, but yeah, the security regulations mirror the medical marijuana security regulations, panic buttons, silent alarms. Um, you have to keep your videotape for thirty days. So, yeah, I mean, it's pretty strict. The Department of Consumer Protection, which oversees both programs now, um, is, they're very proud of their medical marijuana program. And a lot of other states have actually mirrored our program throughout the country as other states went legal with medical programs. And, um, so I know that they're going to do, you know, a really good job with monitoring this program as well. And, um, you know, the regulations are something we're used to, and, um, and to follow them, it's very easy.
Yeah. I was glad to hear that all the inventory is kept in a safe, because one of my concerns about that location, it's, it's, you know, it's easy on, easy off for.
The safe's not big enough. We're, we had to build a twelve-by-eighteen vault in the medical place, so I'll build, I have to build a bigger vault in this place. Yeah, a safe is two, we had four safes at one point, and there was like, that's enough, we're building a vault.
Right, right, right.
Are we getting too deep into the weeds for a text amendment?
Yeah, we are. We are. Yeah, but we, we didn't bring it up.
One, one question, though. So if there is one per town, twenty, twenty-five thousand, and we're very restrictive on our placement, and it's easier for people to get it in other towns, do we run the risk of that business going belly up because it's so restrictive?
The state's going to limit the number of licenses they hand out, so they haven't picked the number yet. Could be twenty, could be fifty.
So, oh, so it won't be one per town?
It won't be one in every town.
Right.
It's a finite number of licenses, and then half will go to the social equity applicants, which are people who lived in particularly, in particular areas that were affected by the war on drugs. Um, and then the other half of the licenses will go to anybody who applies.
I guess. Yeah, seems like there's a lot of safety.
So like in New London County, there only may be one li, one license granted or whatever.
It just depends how many the state decides to go and issue.
Correct, so the fact that we're working on this text amendment may not even mean anything if a license is not awarded to the applicant.
Correct.
So, this is, the way I see it, Ted, is just proactive, just like we do with medicinal.
Exactly. The other side of the coin is, it may be without this, that is, that this application would be put on the bottom of the list.
Right, proactive for the applicant, too.
The uncertainty is to whether it would be allowed.
I got you.
And that's why we came at this stage with a special permit.
So it's sufficiently restrictive for purposely bill? I got you, that's, that was helpful.
It'll be the lottery first, then if you win the lottery, then you have to provide the state with your application. And when we had to do the medical marijuana applications, it was just give the state your application. And that included your business plan, security plan, marketing plan, floor plans, zoning approvals, fire marshal approvals, everything had to be done. And then once that's approved, then they'll give you the license.
Okay.
And, and based on the, what I just read a couple days ago, they're not anticipating the retail licenses to one point two.
Well, let's move to, uh, any further questions by the commission? I want to see if we have any, any, anyone from the public that wishes to weigh in. We'll do that now. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to weigh in on this topic, either in support of or in opposition of this application for a text amendment? All right, seeing none, any, any final or further questions by the commission, or should we take a motion to close the public hearing?
So move to close the public hearing.
No, no questions, Doc.
No, no questions? Ann, Ann Thurlow moved to close the public hearing, you have a second?
I'll second that.
Who seconded?
Mr. Liska.
Mr. Liska. And all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Proposed, that's unanimous, and that public hearing is closed. Moving on to our final, and we're going to change out Mr. Liska for our regular member, Mr. Peck, who's seated again. And at this point in time, I'll move to item number three, uh, on tonight's public hearing segment. It's the request of the East Line Zoning Commission to amend the East Line Zoning Regulations, Section fifteen flood hazard areas. Um, I don't know if the legal has, legal ad's been run.
Legal has run, Mr. Chairman.
We have a zoning official memo?
You do, I think, um.
Yep.
Mr. Donovan may have that.
I do, may I have a sip of water here? Excuse me. Uh, date October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, to the East Line Zoning Commission from William Holland. Regarding request of the East Line Zoning Commission to amend the East Line Zoning Regulations, Section fifteen flood hazard areas. As the commission is aware, this section is periodically required to be updated as the Federal Emergency Management Agency continues to revise its programs. In this proposed update, Diane Ifkovik?
That's pretty good.
Thank you.
I'm impressed, wow.
That scared me there. Of the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, the state's National Flood Insurance Program Coordinator reviewed our existing regulations regarding flood hazard areas and drafted the proposed changes with few exceptions. The review of these regulations has been ongoing at the staff level for several months. Ms. Ifkovik and my office have engaged in numerous conversations, emails, and reviews that have resulted in a proposal before you. This proposal is essentially viewed as a housekeeping task to ensure our regulations are current. In the proposal, the new language is highlighted in red print. The existing language is in black print. The updates clarify several technical issues that had become difficult to use due to confusing language. In addition, Ms. Ifkovik has also recommended that the town ordinance on flood hazard be deleted and replaced with the zoning regulations. The ordinance was established to apply to those areas of East Line that have their own zoning jurisdictions.
That's it? And then we have a planning letter, and then we have a deep letter. I don't see an SCCOG letter on this one, but we've got planning and then deep. Do you want to read one, I'll read the other, or if you want to roll?
Pardon me, here we go, I got it. I got it, I'm good, Mr. Trump.
All right.
So this is a legal ad. Pardon me, that's that.
That should be deep right there.
This is deep. Dated September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, East Line Zoning Commission, care of William Holland, zoning official. Subject, Connecticut deep comments on proposed zoning amendments to Section fifteen flood hazard regulations. Dear Commissioners, thank you for notifying the land and water resource, excuse me, resources division of the proposed text amendment noted above received on September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. Acting as the commissioner's staff, our office has reviewed the revised text for consistency with the policies and standards of the Connecticut Coastal Management Act, Connecticut General Statutes, Sections twenty-two A ninety through twenty-two A dash one-one-two inclusive, and offers comments attached from Diane Ifkovik, our state's NFIP coordinator. Please contact Diane with any questions regarding these comments directly. These comments are made in response to the review requirement contained in Connecticut General Statutes, Sections twenty-two A dash one-zero-four sub E, which requires that any zoning regulations or changes thereto affecting the area within a coastal boundary shall be consistent with the policies of Connecticut General Statutes, Sections twenty-two A, excuse me, Section twenty-two A dash ninety-two, and the criteria of subsection B of Section twenty-two A dash one-zero-two of the CCMA. Further, this section requires that notification be sent to the Commissioner of Energy and Environmental Protection at least thirty-five days prior to the commencement of the public hearing. Once notified, our office is responsible for reviewing the proposal's consistency with the policies of Section twenty-two A dash ninety-two and the criteria of Section twenty-two A dash one-zero-two sub B of the CCMA. This response does not necessarily reflect other planning and zoning considerations which may apply. Should you have any questions, contact me, Marcy Wood.
I'll read the planning one.
Can I ask, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
What did this letter mean? What's, what's twenty-two A and one-oh-two B? You need to know what.
Twenty-two A, those are state statutes that, that regulate coastal area management. That's generally part of what we do when we do coastal area management, site plan reviews. There are, um, automatic referrals required to DEP, text amendments are one of them, that's why this.
Basically the same thing.
Yeah, it's essentially the same thing, that's why we sent it to her for comment, and I will just add that her comments have already been incorporated into this document.
So we are consistent with those statutes?
Right, we.
Had they made changes to their language and we hadn't updated ours, it's, this is more of a housekeeping item than anything else.
Well, it's more of a housekeeping item. What happened was some of the language that was existing became confusing. I've been to many a seminar. There may be fifty people in the room, half, three-quarters are engineers, and when they're leaving, three-quarters of the room didn't understand what the lecture was even about. The FEMA is very difficult to understand and to apply, so we're always looking for clarity in the language.
Yep.
And what this does is provides more clarity. Um, what we like to think is that when the average person comes in and reads through our regulations and starts to go to the flood section, they'll generally have a better understanding because the language is simpler and easy for, easier for us to use and apply.
So this is from FEMA, or is this from your office?
Which one?
These suggested changes to Section fifteen.
These are from Diane. She made all of the changes except for a couple minor ones.
Mm-hmm, okay. The last letter is the planning letter, addressed to me, Matt Walker, Chairman of East Line Zoning Commission, regarding the request of the East Line Zoning Commission to amend the East Line Zoning Regulations, Section fifteen flood hazard areas, Chairman Walker. The East Line Planning Commission meeting at its meeting of October twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, found the above referenced text amendment neither consistent nor inconsistent with the two thousand twenty East Line Plan of Conservation and Development as amended. The commission does recommend that the zoning commission review and consider item number five of page thirty of the two thousand twenty East Line Plan of Conservation and Development as amended, as stated below, as it related to the twenty inches of freeboard rather than the twelve inches currently proposed. Number one, adopt the state of Connecticut's definition of freeboard into East Line's flood control ordinance and zoning regulations. The planning threshold for sea level rise in Connecticut is twenty inches by two thousand fifty. I don't believe that. The state of Connecticut passed a bill in two thousand eighteen to require a full two feet of freeboard for state-led projects, plus updated levels to be evaluated, not more than every ten years. Freeboard represents a margin of safety measured in the number of feet added to projected flood elevations with the goal of compensating for unknown factors that might push actual levels above projected heights. According to FEMA, the cost of two property owners of adding freeboard is only one to two percent of the overall cost of elevating a structure. Owners can expect payback within three to six years due to reductions in flood insurance premiums based on the additional height. If you have any further questions regarding this letter or the P O C D, please don't hesitate to contact Director of Planning, Garrett Geshel. And that was actually sent by Michelle Royce Williams, Secretary.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to briefly comment on that. I did email Diane up at DEP.
Right.
Her document and the materials they sent down, it has one foot. I emailed her and asked her about going to two, and she said the standard we're using right now is one. When you look within this document, you'll find that they require a one-foot elevation above the BFE for construction purposes, which is base flood elevation.
Okay.
And, you know, we will eventually be going to two, we're not there yet. And she suggested we keep it where we are for this purposes, and if we want to look at that later on, we can do that. Um, it does add significant cost to those who are building in those zones, which is, you know, um.
They've already been hit pretty hard anyway with recent.
Yeah, I will also add, I, I've been getting some, um, updates in the last three or four weeks that if you're in a flood zone and you're paying flood insurance, FEMA is looking to put more of that cost on the individual homeowner. If you're in a flood zone, your costs are going to go up dramatically. And, uh, you know, right now it's subsidized, but there, uh, I've seen a couple emails going around, they're looking to, um, I think if you're paying nine hundred, you might be paying nine thousand. Um, they're really looking to recoup losses over the last twenty years where they can and looking to the future as well. So there is significant cost already to building and maintaining structures in, um, in flood zones. And one of the things we've come across is the substantial improvement rule, which you may recall, a year or so ago, you reduced the look-back period from ten years to two years. Uh, in no way, we're looking to go to three, I don't know if it'll get any traction. I think Stoneken might have gone to one. And what that, when that really comes into play is if the property sells and a new group comes along or a new family, and the first thing they want to do is update a kitchen and two bathrooms. And under the substantial improvement rule, you are only allowed to improve up to fifty percent of the market value of the structure, just the structure. So it's exclusive of the lot. So some of these older homes, their value may only be a hundred, hundred-and-fifty, two hundred. So a new kitchen today can be thirty thousand, at least if not fifty. And so you're very limited, so there are a lot of costs associated with building in that area. In addition, I want to point out, um, before we kind of get into the document, Terry did note that there were some, uh, some numeration issues which we will go back and fix.
Okay.
Uh, Jenna's been very, very busy, and she did all of the heavy lifting and, and putting the document together and cutting and pasting. And even though it's gone back to deep, they've looked at it again, we've looked at it again, it looks like we might have overlooked, you know, some, some of the numerical issues, but.
So we're not going to have a completed document tonight?
Well, yeah, I think, I consider this a completed document changing, A to B or fifteen to two.
We'll talk about actually what's going on here, so we're busy just adding a definition here, is that correct? Special flood hazard area?
Yeah, and in the definition section, that's correct.
That's what I would love to talk about, is what's going on in this document.
So if we want to walk through it, Mr. Chairman, very quickly, I can do that. If you look on the beginning of the definition section, we've added coastal AE definition, coastal high hazard area definition, that's for clarity. Then you move along to, I think it's page three, and then we address the limoir issue, which is limit of moderate wave action. Uh, so we put that definition in, and this is all put in by the, the state.
Right.
Uh, next page, special flood area, flood hazard areas, shaffer, moving through. Um, I'm over on fifteen to, fifteen point two point two. I'm over on 15.2.2. We added the area of special flood hazard includes any area shown on the firm as zones AE, et cetera. Plug that in. We're moving into administration. We made some changes there.
Mm-hmm.
Designation, we made a change there, and so on and so forth. Over on 15.33DF, we've added some language there. Under variance, we made some slight modifications. The reason for that is it's much better to have one person making the decisions than two. There was some internal conflicting issues about whether we used appraised value or assessed value. Your zoning regulations are very clear. It's appraised, not assessed. We've had some internal go-rounds concerning that. This will eliminate those issues, and they've been in the zoning regulations for 35, 40, 50 years.
Okay.
Under 15.5, provisions for flood hazard reduction under anchoring. We've got some changes there. They're minor. We get over to B4, and this speaks to the issue...
That is where the numeric -- excuse me, the numerical issue is setting up.
Yeah, and I've looked at that too, but that's a simple fix.
No, I just...
Yeah, but I wanted to make sure that's clear.
Yeah.
We've added on the elevation stuff, the bottom of all, electrical, heating, plumbing, ventilation, and air conditioning equipment, et cetera, has to be elevated to and above the BFE, depending on what zone you're in. And they want to do it anyway, so we move through that. We get over to 15.5.2, specific standards. We've deleted some language, and we've added newer language that clarifies the old language. We get to the issue of fully enclosed areas below the BFE of elevated buildings, and deleted quite a bit here, and then substituted to replace that language with more clarity. Generally, all of this is very boring to most people.
Right.
But when you apply this, you need to, we need to be clear, we need to understand what it is we're going to apply to this new construction, because if we don't do it, FEMA comes down and goes through our files, they check everything, they're very difficult, they usually come armed in military fatigues, they do not fool around. We're also in the CRS program, they threaten to pull that, and I mean, if you don't cross the T, they're calling you on it. So we are very specific. They do go through our files, so it takes a lot of work when you're looking at remodeling or a new building.
Got it.
So zipping through, you can see the changes in red, and they continue throughout the document. And then we get into construction methods. Near the end, we get into floodway and standards for development, shallow flooding areas at zones AO and AH, those are relatively new. We don't have a lot of those. There's some numerical issues I need to change there. And then we get into, turning the page, we get into equal conveyance, above-ground storage tanks, those are very critical, and then structures in one zone or two zones or a portion in a zone, they're very clear on what we need to do and not do. And that's essentially it. It's a housekeeping. When we get to the Board of Selectmen, the idea is to delete the existing town ordinance that was originally intended to cover the beach areas that have their own zoning, Crescent Beach, Black Point, and Giant's Neck Beach Association. Unfortunately, that document never noted that it was just for the beach areas, so that created conflict with another department. So it was recommended by Diane to delete it and adopt the zoning regulations so that they would apply in those areas and everything would be in order. So that really concludes my comments.
All right. Any discussion, comments, questions by the Commission before I go to the public quickly? I don't think there's...
Hey, I have one more question. All these changes as supplied by the DEP, I looked, do these have any effect on original goal, which was to relieve a building owner, a property owner, of this burden that this 10-year limit had?
Right, so you changed the 10 to 2. That was done in the zoning code. It's already been done. You approved that. I could find the date, but I think it's about a year and a half ago. So that's in place already, so there is relief there. In addition, the town participates in the CRS program, which if the town does certain outreach, it runs us about $75,000 a year to apply this program. I'm certified in it, and our previous town engineer was. They're running most of the program. I kind of look over their shoulder, and it provides a 10% reduction approximately to folks in a flood zone. We have to do some outreach, we have to do a lot of things, a lot of bookkeeping, so that also provides some relief.
Will it affect prior...
No, it will not affect the CRS program. That's a completely different program, but it is a FEMA program. This is just clarifying language, what was before you tonight, and replacing it with what we think is easier language to comprehend. And I went through it to see if, with all due respect to our friends at FEMA and DEP, if they added anything that might adversely affect the way we've applied the program. So I did look through it with those kind of eyes, just to ensure that there were no surprises to any of us, and I did not find any.
All right.
I have just one question for Mr. Mulholland, and I was trying to find it. So the planning memo that we received...
Yep.
With the reference to freeboard, could you tell me where that section is?
You will find, you'll actually find it in several sections in the FEMA code, because in different zones, the requirements are different but similar. So it really talks about the base flood elevation plus one foot. For example, if you look at 15.5C4, you will see three-quarters of the way down that new paragraph, connections to other equipment must be located below the BFE plus one foot. So as you go through the document, you'll see that language repeated. And I did talk to Diane Ifkovic.
Ifkovic.
You're right, I'm wrong. And, thank you, very good, Terry. And she felt we should just leave it the way it is at this time.
And not go to the 20...
And not go, not, no, for a variety of reasons. But if you read, if you listen to that document, it's, state projects are essentially exempt from our local zoning regulations anyway, so they are deciding on their projects. But they haven't essentially said to all of us, communities, go to two feet. When they're ready, we will get a directive from them.
I'd say, so in the future, it's most likely they're going to go up.
It's coming. And, you know, we look at sea level rise, and we do pay attention to that. It may not be a common discussion, but at staff level, we're looking at those things. We get a lot of emails from the state on a lot of variety, a huge variety of subjects. I desegregate Connecticut must have sent me 15 in the last two days.
So I guess the last part of the planning memo, though, when it talks about the reduction in insurance companies, and you mentioned that off of their premium, so are we doing a disservice to our homeowners that may not know about that detail meaning?
Well, what happens is, obviously, if you're in a flood zone and you have a mortgage or you've got to have flood insurance, and FEMA wants flood insurance, so it's getting more expensive. What's really happening is the average person can no longer afford to live on the waterfront because of the taxes and the insurance costs. That's where this is headed. And so we normally take direction from DEP. They're very sharp. This lady I'm dealing with, she's been there a long time. She's very good at what she does. She does a lot of lectures around the state. I think she's also a professor as well, I think at UConn, she may teach there as well. They will tell us when they want us to put the two feet in. We'll get a direction. And I mean, they won't be asking, they'll be telling.
Okay.
It'll be very much like this. These are what they told us in our next update, which I would probably anticipate.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak to this text amendment or amendment to the East Lime Zoning Regulations with respect to flood hazard areas, either for or against? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
So moved.
Kim Calagena.
Kim Calagena. Kim K.
Seconded, Terrence P.
Seconded by Terrence. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Unanimous. Moving on to the regular meeting component.
Mr. Chairman, can I just request a quick little break?
Let's take a three-minute break. Three-minute break. Five of, we're back up.
Hold on, hold on. You're on.
We are on the air.
Yes, you are.
All right, we're back in action here at tonight's meeting, moving on to the regular meeting segment. And item number one is the application of Theodore A. Harris Esquire for Christopher Mannwaring for a text amendment to the East Lime Zoning Regulations to add to Section 8.2 landscaping service company as a special permit in a CA zone. Comments from the Commission? Thoughts?
Personally, I don't have an issue with it. I mean, being a special use permit gives the Commission the ability to...
A lot of discretion.
To a lot of discretion, exactly. Like what Ms. Thurlow brought up before, is like, you know, how many trucks and stuff like that? The operations of business, snow plowing and all that stuff. Being in the business of snow plowing myself, it's all hours a night, so I think it's up to the...
I've got an issue with, as I say, fresh fertilizer. I think fresh fertilizer should be banned.
Mr. Dwyer, that has to do, this is for the text amendment, though, so it's not an application.
That would be later.
That would come upon...
We wanted to try to monitor or regulate that aspect of it, but...
We'll get to the fertilizer next time.
Yeah. It's not, it's not an application, it's just a text amendment.
No, I understand.
The question is, a landscaping service company by special permit being allowed to operate in the CA zone. Anybody else? Thoughts, comments, questions?
I'm still not real comfortable with it. Even if you put up fences or buffers, if you had trailers coming in front of your house early in the morning, late at night, they're noisy, they're loud. I'm just not sure it fits in a CA zone, but that's just me.
But again, this is a special permit, so every applicant would come forward, and if they were looking to put this type of establishment in the midst of single-family homes, we would be able to have a vote on that, right?
Absolutely.
So this is just for the text amendment?
Absolutely. It gives it the possibility, essentially. Anyone else?
I would like to commend the applicant, because he has these places all over town, and this is, I think, the first...
Applicant.
First one that's ever come.
To legitimize it.
Right, 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 right.
Living around people who have landscaping trailers?
Yeah.
At their residence, I agree.
They do?
I know nothing.
Yep. And it favors, the CA is a little bit of a mixed bag, so it's potentially doable, you know? Take a look at whatever specific application comes before us. So I'll take a motion at this point in time. I think we're ready to do so.
I will make a motion to approve, I got stamps over this, the application of Theodore Harris Esquire for Christopher Mannwaring for a text amendment to the East Lime Zoning Regulations to add to Section 8.2 landscape, excuse me, landscaping service company as a special permit in a CA zone.
That was Terry Donovan.
Seconded.
We have a second.
Seconded.
Mr. Peck, any final comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Vote carries unanimously, 6-0-0.
Mr. Chairman, published next Thursday, effective on Friday.
Very good. Good. Thank you, Mr. Mulholland. And we have, Mr. Peck is going to recuse himself again. We're moving on to the second item in our regular meeting. And Mr. Liska, we'll see. And with that, we'll move on to item number two in the regular meeting, which is the application of Theodore A. Harris Esquire for Laurie Zarinda for a text amendment to the East Lime Zoning Regulations to add to Section 11.2 Marijuana Dispensary as a special permit in an LI zone, and add restrictions to Section 25.5 Table of Minimum Controls for Marijuana Dispensary. Comments, questions?
So, Mr. Chairman, I have three comments to the proposed text amendment. So the first is, I do think we should add back in the micro cultivator component that was removed in the most recent version, just to give us the most flexibility for the text amendment. I also liked your idea of adding childcare facilities after public and private schools, just to be on the safe side there. And then I would like to propose that we also reduce the operations hours, 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. I think 9:00 PM is too late.
I'm sorry, that was 9:00 to...
Changing 9:00 PM to 7:00.
9:00 to 7:00, thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to add on to that, licensed childcare facilities. I mean, we have children we could take care of, so, I mean, you know, somebody coming in here.
That's a good addition.
Yep, I agree.
Sanctioned, licensed, whatever, sure.
License, I think, is good.
Good point. So add that, and what else? Cultivation, is that what she said?
Micro cultivation. I don't know what that is.
The micro cultivator component.
Grower.
There's two types of grow licenses. One is for a large producer that can produce in over like 25,000 square feet or bigger. Then there's the micro cultivator, which will be some of those to, I think it's less than 10,000 feet.
10,000 or less.
10,000 feet or less. So their space is smaller, but they can have license to grow also if they have to be in a smaller building.
I got you.
So maybe it shouldn't be micro cultivator, and maybe it should be any cultivation.
Well, that's a term of art under the Act. I'm sorry.
That's, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Point of clarification.
That's a specific use category under the Act.
So for the, is there a terminology for the larger?
It's in the prior version, actually. Just refer to the prior version.
Yeah, I think the prior version had it as micro...
No, it just says cultivation.
Well, this, well, maybe there are different versions. The one that I looked at in the packet had micro cultivator, and then down towards sale slash consumption, it said all sales or cultivation shall occur within a building. But I was referring to the definition section.
I understand, yeah, I see it.
Here it just said micro cultivator.
Mm-hmm.
I guess my point is whether we're selling it, not we're, but whether the franchisee person, the owner of the establishment, is selling it or cultivating it. I think we should expand our text amendment to cover both.
The only issue I have with that is, if you're a cultivator, I mean...
I thought you eliminated cultivator.
You would be very limited as well. I mean, I understand your points in terms of that, but...
The other issue we have is the legal ad. We didn't cover the larger grower. We only covered the small grower. And so the question, yeah, so the question then would be, was this duly advertised? Did any competitor have noticed? Did any, obviously no one showed up, but however, technically...
Aren't we all allowed to be cultivators?
I don't see, because, yeah, well, the way I interpret that is like, if you cultivate it, you can't sell it, right? So why would somebody want to go to a cultivation, to ship it out? That's, so to me, in this respected area, I mean, the way that it's written in terms of the establishment itself makes sense. Cultivator is a totally different aspect of it and would not fit in the LI zone, I don't believe, anyway.
Well, I want to take us back to our subgroup, I don't know, that was like three years ago. I forget how long, how long ago did we do that subgroup?
Year and a half, two, two, it could be three.
Did we have a subcommittee on that?
We did.
You did, okay. For medical, right?
It's been a lot of water over the dam.
Right, and so the whole premise of this was whether we were going to have someone selling it or growing it in East Lime, we wanted to put it in the LI zone. And given that this is a text amendment, I'm, given that this is a text amendment, I'm just looking for us to protect ourselves, because this way, as a special permit, anyone who wants to sell it or grow it has to come here, right? And I think that's the best way to give us an opportunity to make sure, even though there's technically only one place that they can do either of those activities, that we just have oversight of it.
Ted. How did you come up with 7 o'clock?
I think everyone should be... I think everyone should be at home by seven.
You know, I don't get out of work until after seven o'clock.
Yeah, and the issue I have with that is that there's establishments that sell alcohol, there's like maybe how many, 25, 30 in town here?
We used to be eight- we used to be eight o'clock, and then they pushed it till nine.
The other thing to point out is, it's not our text amendment.
Right.
It's the applicant's text amendment.
Right, right, right.
It was our text amendment, we can make changes all day long, so we need to be cautious.
Sure.
These are recommendations from the commission that were presented to the applicant, is the way I interpreted that.
But we, but Bill, we have to write for a text amendment to-
You can, you're okay, in my opinion, where we're at, but I just wanted to put that on the record.
Right.
You can either approve or deny as amended, more or less, but I do like- I do like the added childcare facility, though.
Licensed.
Licensed childcare facility. Not a big fan of the hours. The hours, I think, are fine. No, that's a good point.
Oh, yeah, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Anyone else?
I just wanted to, I'm out at Capital Drive and Colton Road several times a week because Doggy Daycare is located out there.
Oh.
But that-
Doggy daycare doesn't count.
But I know that, that the new apartments-
Why does that dog daycare?
The new apartments, I know the main entrance is not off Capital Drive, but the other day, there were a group of kids from those apartments playing at the end of the street there, and I just don't, if it's important to be 2,000 feet from a daycare and a school, you've got kids right there in that complex that are going to be playing there, whether that road is locked or not, because the ground, the grass is open, I mean, they just walk around it.
Correct, but it's not a licensed playground. Kids are going to play everywhere. They play in the street, they play in the sidewalk, they play in the grass.
But if it's important to be 2,000 feet away from a playground or a school-
But it's not a playground. I understand what you're trying to say, but-
That's where you hope there's supervision, some parental oversight, not letting kids, you know, I'm not letting my kid run through an industrial, just speaking for me. It's probably not the right direction to go, you know, you're going to go in the other direction where the playground is.
Your kids are old enough where they should know.
My, we're talking grandkids now, yeah, grandkids, not kids.
And only the two first buildings are occupied.
Yeah. But I think it's a great thought to think about the fact that- that-
Yeah, they're right there.
That property is there. It's sort of shielded, it's divorced, I think, is Attorney-
Kids play in front of package stores.
Yeah.
Well, they play in front of bars.
Anyone else, comments? For me, this comes down to, I think you can adjust to changing times and still kind of hold your principles by determining where a particular business is going to be. So, for me, that's sort of what this issue is in a nutshell. I think people know my, I wasn't- I wasn't overjoyed when the law was passed on June 22nd, to be quite honest with you, based on, and that's, you know, perception is reality for people, right? My perception, 27 years working in the criminal justice system, was this is not a good thing for our town, our state, our country. I think it was also, I think it's also in many ways, I'm just going to go on a little quick rant here, discriminatory towards our cities, especially small cities, Norwich, Willimantic, maybe New London, that are already having a tough time combating substance abuse, and, you know, what is this going to do? This, I've read studies both ways, statistics can be skewed in different directions in Colorado that show that there's more marijuana use as a result of the legalization of recreational marijuana, that it's- that it's on the rise. Is that a good thing for society, or is that a bad thing? I mean, I'll just put that out there just rhetorically, so, but having said all that, here we are. This is the, this is the hand that we've been dealt as a zoning commission, as a town, as a state, whether you're for it, opposed to it, but here we are, and so, we've got to adjust. We've got, did I hit you with a pen?
Almost.
We've got to adjust. But I think we're going about it the right way in regulating where an activity like this would be located in town and allowing our town to benefit from a revenue standpoint, a tax revenue standpoint, from a, from a business such as this, which Attorney Harris indicated, that is, if not here, then where? Next door in Waterford, in Old Lime, you know, why not, why not see the benefit for our town? You know, we've been in some difficult times financially, with budgets and everything else. We see what goes on every year with the school budget, and things are just so tight, and, you know, we're always looking for extra revenue, so I guess at the end of the day, and not that money determines everything, but it's a, it's certainly a factor to consider for our town as we look at this issue, and that's not really our issue as a zoning commission, we're looking at land use, but I think if you're not looking at it globally, then I think to some degree you're making a mistake, too. You've got to look at it a little more globally than that, so, that's my two cents on the issue.
Yeah, we'll say.
One thing that I will follow up on you on, I did attend the town meeting last night, as did Mr. Dwyer, and you were there as well, right, for a little bit. I stayed for the delivery, I stayed till 10 o'clock, till the, till the end, and I did not see anybody steal that microphone, so I don't know where it went. But there was some education that was brought to everybody there last night from Ms. Zarinda and other members of the public who chose to spoke.
It's in front of the bill.
One thing, to speak, rather, sorry. One thing that I did learn is that the rise in marijuana usage became popular during prohibition, when this country tried to ban something else. So, we have no one to blame but ourselves in terms of that. As you know, we're just doing the text amendment, and it's ultimately up to the town, but the towns, from what I also gathered last night's meeting, is that the Board of Selectmen is actually more concerned with the cultivation of said product, not so much the retail aspect of it. And there were more guests or participants in the audience who spoke in favor of such establishments. And if you look at the demographics of the people who were here, there's quite a bit of age difference in them, so, not being discriminatory against anybody whatsoever, just state that.
You should add that Representative, I forget her name.
I'm getting there, yes.
She spoke against it.
Yes, and our state rep, I did ask her afterwards, I says, are you here as our state rep or as a resident? And she said, as both. And she, you know, had the whole bill on here, and, you know, she mentioned how in Colorado, there's been a rise in marijuana deaths and such, you know, and they tested him for this and they tested him for that. And then she also said, well, you know, there's no way to test people for marijuana around here. So, I asked her afterwards, and she said that they did it in their post-autopsy, but the way it was presented, I took it as something different, but whichever. I see it as a plus, like we did on the medical marijuana. I think if we do do this, it's a step in the right direction for the town. Think of the future, not the past. Moving on.
Very good.
That is my comment.
Very well, very well written, very well regulated. That's very good.
Yeah, and the state regulations are harder than we can even do.
Yeah.
And the town will probably come up with its own regulations, as you may say, so, it's a win-win, if you ask me, but I have it all right here.
Any other thoughts on the hours of operation? The text amendment is nine to nine. Kim has indicated that her preference would be nine to seven, nine to six, nine to seven, nine to seven.
It comes to force as a special-
Well, right, 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 so we'll deal with that.
So, then we could make it more stringent.
Yeah, we'll deal with that.
I can withdraw that one.
That's fine.
Terry, can I go back to your, so, if the planning commission is more concerned about the cultivation, then-
The Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, Board of Selectmen.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, is Board of Selectmen or not? Okay.
Yep.
So, if they're more concerned about the cultivation, then if we have an opportunity to utilize the prior version of the text amendment-
Cultivation. I don't have an issue with that.
That included micro cultivation, it might help us bring those matters before the zoning-
Correct, and it covers our assets, more or less. I believe, Mr. Mulholland, what are your thoughts on that?
I think you're within your parameters.
Yeah. Attorney Harris, do you have any issues with us adding, amending your regulations a little bit with two little additions, such as in a licensed daycare facility, and by adding the micro cultivator, or cultivator, excuse me?
Return it back to the-
Cultivator.
That's right, right.
I'm sorry, quick clarification. Are we using the term micro cultivator?
No.
Because that was more fitting, right?
That's the term of our-
Micro cultivator is correct, or?
Yes.
Then it's cultivating in a certain sized space. They're also going to license some growers to grow in a larger space.
Okay. The reason, the reason I ask is, because when we make our motion, it has to be micro cultivator or cultivator, we just got to know what we're, what we're agreeing to.
Micro cultivator.
Well, cultivator cover of both?
Cultivation, completely growing that.
So, Kim, you're saying you want to go back to the micro cultivator, is that correct?
I, well, I think that might be easiest since that was, I think, how it was originally-
I think you're, I think you're fine doing that.
Okay, okay.
And then, you know, for the larger cultivators, whatever, that term, we have a little bit of a hole there, but I don't know that they would target our LI strip-
They won't fit in an LI zone, really.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, very good.
Okay.
All right, I will take a motion at this point in time.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve the application of Theodore A. Harris Esquire for Lori Zarinda for a text amendment to the East Lime Zoning Regulations to add to Section 11.2 Marijuana, excuse me, cannabis establishment. Where am I, a little? And micro cultivator to the special permit in an LI zone and add restrictions to Section 25.5 Table of Minimum Controls for a cannabis cultivator, as presented with the addition of licensed childcare facility in, location restrictions, Section B of 25.5.
Right.
Did I say that right?
I think you did, yeah, yeah. We'll clean it up, but you got, you got everything in there.
Second.
We have a second. So, Mr. Donovan made the motion, Kim Kay seconded the motion. Any final comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions. Vote carries five, one, zero. Congratulations on your text amendment.
Amended.
Um, Mr. Chairman, published-
Amended, amended text amendment.
Published next Thursday, effective on Friday.
Amended, modified.
Mr. Harris is two for two tonight.
Yeah, two for two, two for two.
Now I just got to get rid of that billboard and not be happy.
Moving to the last one, item number three, request of, oh, he's back, Mr. Peck is back. You guys did that, I didn't even see you. That was fast.
Slick.
You get fast. Request of the East Lime Zoning Commission to amend the East Lime Zoning Regulations, Section 15 Flood Hazard Areas. I think we're in good shape there, right? Motion, can I take a motion there, please?
Yeah. Motion as presented with minor corrections.
Okay, Mr. Donovan has made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Kim Kay, again, I believe, I think she beat Mr. Dwyer.
Just five.
Just barely by a, it was very close. We've got to go back to the instant replay, photo finish, photo finish. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. That vote carries six, zero, zero on those new regulations, or additions to those regulations. Additions, deletions, modifications, and so-
Corrections.
Corrections.
Okay.
With that, we'll move on to the application of E.S. Goodman LLC and/or assigns for a site plan review for mixed-use development at property identified in the application as 185 Main Street, Niantic, East Lime Assessors Map, 12.1, Lot 79. Do we need to read the zoning official's memo?
Yes, you do.
Or just see it? Okay, we got a zoning official's-
We?
We, I say we. We're we, we're team. We're team. There's no I in team.
Yeah, that's true, but there's a me, right?
There's a me.
All right, dated-
You're the only one reading this, though.
I know. October 21st, 2021, to the East Lime Zoning Commission, from William Mulholland. Application of E.S. Goodman LLC and/or assigns for a site plan review for mixed-use development at property identified in the application as 185 Main Street, Niantic, East Lime Assessors Map, 12.1, Lot 79. The applicant has applied for a site plan renewal for the above referenced property. The subject property is commonly referred to as the Norton's Garage Parcel on Main Street and is located between Skipper's Restaurant and the Morton House. This parcel was issued a special permit, coastal site plan, and site plan approval by the zoning commission in January 2013. The permits were for a mixed-use building consisting of 10 dwelling units and four street-level commercial units. All approvals are still valid except for the site plan. State statutes, excuse me, provide timeframes for expirations, excuse me, expiration of site plans. Because the subject's site plan has expired, a renewal of the original plan is necessary for the project to move forward. The site plan was reviewed by the town's land use staff at the time of the original submission. The review included the grading, drainage, landscaping, parking, and other pertinent items. The applicant is seeking reapproval of this plan. Because of the expiration of the plan, this application is viewed as a housekeeping item. As you may know, the site has become a blighted property that adversely affects the character of Main Street.
Very good.
So, Mr. Chairman-
Mr. Mulholland, yes.
The applicant is here, we're looking to, or he is looking to use the same exact site plan, no changes. This was reviewed by our team and approved by this commission. Surely, there were different members, as you know, they, members come and go. There are no changes proposed at this, so, we're looking simply as a housekeeping to re-up. These plans are approved for five-year periods. The state statutes regulate the timeframes. The special permit is valid because it was never initiated.
Mm-hmm.
That's essentially it, very, very basic.
Mr. Mulholland, the one question I had is on drainage, because I think so many things have changed since January 2013. I'm not so much worried about grading, landscaping, or parking, but does the current site plan address current drainage?
It does, I talked to our town engineer about that and had him take a quick look. We have a new town engineer, Victor Benny, as you may know, has moved on. Alex Claus is now here, he's a pretty sharp young man, comes out of the private sector, he actually worked for B&amp;L Engineering, and a very picky young guy. So, we've looked at that again, and we still have some steps, this is approved, we still need to get into the building inspector and go through all that process. At that time, we'll go back and look at everything once more before I sign off, because he needs a separate zoning permit out of my office, a building permit, and we have a tendency, when we do that, to go back and look at everything to make sure we didn't overlook anything, cross the Ts, and at that time, we often come up with other suggestions. You know, as new methodologies become available, maybe more cost-efficient programs come up, different systems, so we'll look at that. So, with that said, that's essentially where we're at.
That's a great thought, great suggestion, Kim. I agree.
Yeah.
Make sure everything's up to date, and I'm sure it is, and our town staff will make sure that everything's up to date. And I thought this was 10 or 11 years old, well, it's eight, I guess, right? The original is January 2013, so, all right. Very good. Questions, did?
Can we move to approve?
Absolutely.
I move to approve the application of E.S. Goodman LLC and/or assigns for a site plan review for mixed-use development at property identified in the application as 185 Main Street, Niantic, East Lime Assessors Map, 12.1, Lot 79.
Seconded.
Very good, and we have a second. It was Ann Thurlow made the motion, seconded by Mr. Donovan.
We didn't get the, did the applicant-
Did you guys want to say something?
Did you want to say anything?
I think they're good.
Probably, the only thing you can do now is mess it up, right?
Yeah, that is true. You did stay there for two hours.
What I would suggest is if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself and just briefly describe that.
Briefly describe the project.
The community.
That'd be great because it's.
No, that's a good point. Gentlemen, you're on.
Eric Goodman, Cody Blake.
Awesome.
So we teamed up together in 2015. My great mistake, Cody broke the plane field. I went to Boston, became a lawyer. He worked in nuclear power. Came back together, started doing historic renovations, Mystic. What houses? Yeah. Like commercial. Ended up doing the sift big shop projects for Adam down there.
Nice.
We saw the property next door. We bought Free Water Street, built the standard, which just finished.
It's a new yellow building.
Yeah.
And in the process of that, we met Kurt Hayes, who owned this property. He said he'd be interested in doing something here and we took a really strong look at it, so.
Here we are, October 21st.
A big thing for us though is local businesses, local subcontractors, suppliers. Rinsen's one of our biggest suppliers and a lot of the guys who and girls work on the project.
Southeastern Connecticut.
Yeah. So, and we, we try to put a heavy focus on that because it's important to be part of the community and we feel that we've found that the production and quality that comes out of those.
There's just.
Yeah, it's a lot of price. So we're looking to do the same thing here, just a little bit.
Would this be an appropriate time or not to give the commission a quick, quick description of what is going to be going in there or?
Same exact.
Same exact, okay, perfect, perfect. Mixed use?
Yeah, we've got.
Nice residences above and then retail or office below.
For retail spots.
Right.
Retail spots.
Is it 10? How many, how many units up?
I think it was 10.
10.
It was 10. Same qualities and standards if you look up.
Awesome.
No more pizza shops.
No, we actually though have some pretty interesting local businesses that have already expressed us.
I love it.
So the goal is to start construction in December and.
Oh, that's awesome.
Fantastic, fantastic.
I will just say there is a rooftop deck.
Wow.
For those who live there, you will see out the Long Island Sound.
Beautiful.
As long as they follow the female regulations, I'm good.
They're not in the flood zone, lucky them.
It was a joke.
Which is good because the Mystic project is tough being.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So yeah, hopefully this is the first time we see it.
Gentlemen, welcome.
Fantastic, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Very good. So we, we had a motion, we had a second, and then we kind of went sideways a little bit.
We had discussion.
We had, we had discussions. Then we did have discussion. All those in favor? I'm sorry.
That existing property is a real ice store coming into town.
Correct.
This will be a great improvement.
That's it.
Yeah.
I love that the East End is being, you know, developed little by little. I wasn't sure that would happen sooner than later. I thought it would be Main Street and that would follow much later, but it's interesting, it's interesting.
Yeah, we're very excited. We'll be pulling.
Yeah.
The Business District to the east.
Absolutely.
We did the Marina recently. This architecture is very similar and our hope is that we will see some further efforting places like the Morton House that might need a little attention, a little love and we'll leave it at that.
Do you know when Amtrak's going to replace the fence along the.
They've already, they've already.
We have a motion on the floor, ladies and gentlemen.
It's coming.
I don't know when.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. Vote carries unanimously, congratulations. I think we're, we're excited.
Welcome.
The town's excited and it's going to be a great addition, no question, no question. I love the way Niantic is, is being, we, we had a little hiccup there for what, a year and eight months, 10 months, whatever it was with COVID. And I think we were all worried about the restaurants and the businesses down there. Most of them, for the most part, I think pretty much survived somehow and now, you know, with the addition of projects like this, it's just, it's just great to see this, this renaissance re, recontinue, so to speak, if that's a word.
I'll also add that I understand there might be some movement on the Main Street row and then I may have something going back in the Morton House, so we'll see there. We're in discussion, so I can't say anything more at this point, but Main Street continues, continues to evolve.
Definitely. Great stuff. Great stuff. Very good, congrats, thank you. All right, we've got approval of minutes coming up, approval of minutes of October 7th, 2021. I'm just going to say real quick, everybody's got to be a little tired here. I mean, I'm, I'm refreshed. I haven't been to a meeting in, you know, six months. I could go all night, let's go, you know? But you guys got to be warned. I mean, it's been every week and we're back here again next Thursday and then we're back the first week of November, so.
I'm not sure if you were coming back now.
I'll tell you, I, I was, I was sitting on the.
Wait, those dates have not come up yet, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You know, there may be a Florida trip or.
I had a sense of battalion guys looking for.
Like a month in a row.
Yeah.
I, Kim, I feel so free tonight, it's great.
Exactly, well, exactly. We got things we got to get done, there's no doubt, no doubt.
I feel so free with no tie.
Approval of minutes of October 7th, we'll take these singularly, I guess, 2021. I was, was I here for that? I wasn't here for that one. No, absolutely not, no. I think I was, I think I was not feeling well for that one, if I'm not mistaken.
October 7th was actually very quick and easy, in all honesty. So can we make an emotion for both or just one?
If people are, have read the minutes and are comfortable with making a motion for both, I think we can make a motion for both.
Actually, I think we're pretty much the same.
What is it?
I missed the seven.
Oh, Kim, yeah. All right, so then we'll do them individually then.
You'll do, you'll do the seventh first.
All right, so I'm, I will make a motion to approve the zoning commission meeting minutes from October, regular, public and regular meeting minutes from October 7th, 2021.
Okay, and do we have a second? It would have to be Norm, Bill, Ann, or Denise.
Second.
Second, Norm. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions.
Aye.
Kim K. needs to abstain, so it's a five, zero, one, approval of those minutes.
Do you need to abstain?
Oh, I'm sorry, four, four, zero, two. Four, zero, two.
You have been away.
I wanted to be here.
You have been away.
Four, zero, two. I was here and, yeah, I mean, I was home, but I was.
I had to send some battalion guys to Florida to get them.
Four, zero, two, four, zero, two. And then the 21st.
Okay, nope, 14th. On the minutes.
Today's the 21st.
Yes.
Approval of minutes of October 14th, go ahead.
The only thing that I found on the.
Did you find something?
Meeting minutes from October 14th, public and regular was actually in the last paragraph.
Very end.
Yeah, to where it says, this is the way it reads right now, the board agreed to continue this item until November 4th, 2021. That date should read October 28th, 2021. And it would be prudent to meet at seven.
That's correct.
For said meeting. So, because we had a lot of.
Okay.
Conversation on it, whether to be on the 4th or the 28th, and the commission chose to go to the 28th.
Wow, okay.
So the dates are just a little erged right there. That's all I was able to find.
I would have told you for the 4th.
I have on page three, Ms. Markovitz approved to move to approve the minutes. I also, I don't think that's as true.
Okay, okay. Okay, all right.
I'm not sure if you did the second, but I did vote, I did move to approve.
Mr. Dwyer.
Where does that say?
No doubt.
Second on that, I believe.
Can I go back to, so what page was that? That was page three. And on, opposing Ms. Markovitz to approve and Mr. Dwyer second. And I'm sorry, Terry, could you go back to what your issue was?
Yeah, it was on the last page of the, excuse me, not the last page, it's on page 10 of the October 14th minutes. Last paragraph where it says the board agreed to continue this item until the November 4th, 2021 meeting. That should read the October 28th, 2021 meeting and decided it would be prudent to meet at 7:00 PM for that meeting.
It's right, it's the section right above adjournment.
And Norm, Terry, Kim, Bill, Ann, and Denise all sat for that meeting. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Find us, sir.
Denise sat as a regular member for the whole meeting. You've been doing a lot of, yeah.
Yeah, you have.
We've had months go by at times without seating at all for you. You can attest to that, Jim, where we've had like perfect attendance for months and months and then.
Bang Zoom.
Then we go through spells where.
Yeah, the packets are a little messed up, so, not a good first line for you, but.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, did we take a motion yet or not? We did not.
I will.
You, you, you found those change, or we made those changes, okay.
So I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes, public, regular of October 14th as corrected.
Very good, do we have a second?
Second.
We had Mr. Donovan and Kim K. seconded that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, I will abstain, so that will be five, zero, one. And moving on to old business, we do not have any. New business, any business on the floor? If any by the majority vote of the commission, does anybody have anything pressing tonight? We'll be back here again next week. Zoning official?
I don't have anything. You know, we're busy and we're flat out just with our regular material every day. We are inundated with building permits. I must have signed 70 last week. I got a new list today of another 30 that just came in in the last two days.
Okay.
So we're all busy, we'll soldier on.
Good problems, but problems, yep. And X, our ex officio left us a little earlier this evening, take care of a good husband. And we have comments from zoning board liaison to planning commission. We had.